You ready?
Yeah.
All right. Good evening, everyone. My name is Ellie Rounds Bloom. I am the president of the Board of the Salem Education Foundation.
And I'm Christine Ross, and I'm the Voter Services co-chair with the League of Women Voters of Salem. Welcome, everyone, to the forum this evening.
As you can tell, the Salem Education Foundation and the League of Women Voters of Salem have partnered to plan this forum. Spanish interpretation during the forum is being provided by Haiti Benoit and Alexandria Forte.
And we're very pleased that Kenan McKenzie de Franza will moderate the forum tonight. Dr. McKenzie de Franza is a professor of education at Gordon College and president of the North Shore NAACP. She's founder of the Aspiring Spirit and an expert on civic engagement, research, and practice, organizational consulting, and education practice, policy, and administration. She's also a member of the Beverly School Committee. So we're very pleased to have Kenan with us this evening.
Awesome. Thank you so much, everyone, and thank you for those of you who've come out. Those who are on Zoom appreciating this event. So welcome to our school committee candidate forum, and thank you all for stepping forward to advance leadership in the civic space that I know in recent years has been challenging. And so your fortitude and your willingness is really appreciated. So the four candidates here this evening will be on the ballot on Election Day, November 7th. Voters may choose up to three of the four candidates when they vote. So in alphabetical order, our candidates tonight are Henry Galergan, A.J. Hoffman, Mary Manning, and Veronica Miranda. So while we are conducting our forum, we will ask that you please silence your cell phones. And it may be very tempting, but we're going to ask if you can hold your applause to the very end just to make sure we have time to get all of our questions answered. So even if you hear something you don't agree with, we want to make sure we hold all of our comments for them. And so the questions we have tonight were obtained from members of the public, teachers, and students. So we have student voice represented, which I'm very excited about. And our forum organizers collected them and then edited them for clarity and for length. So in the League of Women Voters Salem co-sponsored events and forums, the candidates are given questions and the opportunity to answer about their approach and their ideas. But they will not engage with one another, so this is not considered a debate per se. And we'll have two minutes for opening statements, so that each candidate will then be able to just introduce themselves. After that, I'll ask the prepared questions, and there'll be 90 seconds to respond. We do have a timekeeper to help us with that. And then we'll have one-minute closing statements. Does anyone have any questions on that here? Okay. Excellent. So we will start with our introductory statements. And when you do so, we would love for you to just address briefly why you are interested in being on school committee and maybe one or two areas of expertise that you're going to bring to the position. And we will start the timekeeping. We will then move our order in this direction. We will have Mary Manning, A.J. Hoffman, Henry Galergan, and Veronica Miranda. So we're trying to mix up the order with each time that we have a question posed. So is everybody clear on the order? Okay, so I will pause there, and you all can start your opening statements. So Mary, you're up.
Okay, well, thank you. And I also want to thank the League of Women Voters and the Salem Education Foundation. I'm running for a third term on the Salem School Committee. I offer not only experience of the past eight years as a committee member, but also the experience of the prior 42 years as a team player in the Salem Public Schools. I was a teacher, I was a coach, and I was an administrator. And I think the combined experiences of both of those areas bring me to a unique perspective that I can bring to this committee. I've lived in Salem my entire life. I have a Bachelor of Arts from Salem State College, because at the time it was a college. And I'm hanging on to that. In English literature, basically. Then I went to BU and I got a Master's of Education in recreation education. Then I continued on in graduate study at BU. And I was in sort of defending the first proposal for a topic for my dissertation when I switched careers from a teacher to an administrator. So I put that on hold, and I went back to Salem State to get an administration degree. So I have a second Master's in administration from Salem State. Did I go back and finish? No, one of those things, I'm always going to go back and finish that. And life sort of took over, and the Salem Public Schools job got more and more involved. And I'm really glad that I decided to put all my efforts into what I did in the school system. So I think that's it, I think probably, that I need to do for an introduction, okay?
Thank you. A.J.?
I'm A.J. Hoffman. I'm running because I see both strengths and weaknesses of Salem Public Schools. And I want to be a part of and help facilitate the change as we have done in the community. I am, and early childhood education is something I believe passionately about. I've been in it my whole life. I believe that the early years of learning are the most critical. This is the time where you learn social skills, build relationships, cooperation, life skills, exploration of science, math, arts, and everything is learned through play. It sets our children up for success. If we don't do it age appropriately, you can't, you can take away the spark of learning. I am a longtime LBGTQIA advocate with a record of commitment and experience supporting the LBGTQIA plus working, working school, working with school administrations. Youth of color. Sorry, let me start that over again. I apologize. I'm a longtime LBGTQIA advocate with a record of commitment and experience supporting the LBGTQ youth, working with social, with school administrations for greater equity and public and physical safety for them as a marginalized population in our schools. As a result, I have opened dialogue with other marginalized community. Youth of color understand unique challenges they face as people of color bringing their whole selves to Salem Public Schools. I am a Salem Public School parent and volunteer for eight years. I believe in our schools and we, and we also need our community, we also need our community to make them stronger. If our community doesn't believe in our kids and our schools, then our kids don't believe in themselves. That's not the message I'm willing to be okay with. We have an amazing opportunity happening, and I want to be a part of fostering those opportunities for all our kids.
Thank you.
Hi, everyone. I want to first off thank the League of Women Voters and the Salem Education Foundation for hosting us tonight, and to the people watching this forum tonight as well, thank you. My name's Henry Mehmet Galergan. My pronouns are he, him, his. I'm a proud first-generation American, and I moved to Salem following the heels of my wife, who's a North Shore native. When we moved here, I immediately fell in love with Salem and started getting involved. As Chair of the Salem Beautification Committee, I've worked with some amazing volunteers to keep Salem beautiful. Picking up litter, taking care of our traffic islands, and thinking about our community and thinking of our community as something worth cultivating. I'm a lifelong public school student, and I've taken some non-traditional steps in my journey. I took a gap year after high school to work, followed by a community college, and later I received a degree from a four-year public institution. I spent my career in the nonprofit space where I worked with the Boston Public Schools. Specifically, I focused on how we can infuse resources into our classrooms working directly with principals and teachers on transformative projects. More recently, I've worked with New England nonprofits and schools through a nonprofit called ESC. As the program manager, I worked to find them low-cost consulting options for anything these organizations need: fundraising, strategic visioning, HR, and DEI initiatives. The reason why I'm running for school committees is really simple. I care about our schools, and I care about our students. I was an IEP student with a learning disability. And with 72% of our students classified as high-needs, I want to be a voice for those kids. I think it's important that the school committee be representative of the school district. We must keep everyone focused on our larger mission and giving our students the education they deserve. Thank you.
Thank you.
Hello, my name is Veronica Miranda. And I'll start off by saying that I moved to Salem in 2019. I live in public housing, Rainbow Terrace. And I started getting involved through living at Rainbow Terrace and reaching out to my ward counselor at the time. And the reasons why I got involved, aside from caring about where I live and caring about the Salem community, is that I have a child growing up in this world and going through the public school system. She's six. And I really wanted to be as involved and engaged in her education as I could. Currently, I'm in a master's program, at the end of it, my last year. And I'm doing an internship as a clinical intern nearby in Salem, I won't name it. I'm also, I serve as a board commissioner for the Housing Authority as a tenant rep. And my work in the city and what I see as kind of like my life mission is to amplify voices that are not often heard. And whether that be through a lack of resources and not having the time to get involved or intimidation, I really want to amplify those voices, not just my own, but other people of color, people that live with lower income. I grew up in poverty. I struggled all through school. Not as much academically, but because of having a lack of support in the community. And so that's something that's important to me going forward. I'm running for school committee so that I can bring that voice to the table and so that we can really make sure that all of our students are supported in the ways that they need. Thank you.
Thank you, everyone. So I'll start with my first question. And your microphone is certainly something you can feel free to move and lower out of the current place if you need it a little closer to you. I'm going to start on Henry's end of the podium this time. And the first question we have is what is one of the key strengths of the Salem Public Schools? And how would you support it and expand its reach as a school committee member?
Thank you for the question. I think without a doubt, the biggest strength of our public schools is our diversity. Our diversity is the foundation of a well-rounded community. And I think nurturing that and supporting that is one of the biggest goals, not just as a member of the school committee, but everyone in the district: parents, teachers, educators, the whole community should be strengthening. And we just got to keep building on that, because as someone who grew up in a not-diverse school system, I would never want that for my future kids. And I will be proud the day when I send my future kids to Salem Public Schools because of the diversity that we have.
Thank you. A.J.?
Thank you. I also agree with Henry. The diversity is great in our, in our schools. I also believe that our teachers are a great strength that we have, and we need to support them. And our administration is leading us in a great path down, getting kids more opportunities that they don't have. I really feel strongly that that we have a great base to go from, and our strategic plan is going to lead us there.
Thank you.
Could you repeat the second part of the question?
Sure. How would you support or expand the reach of this strength as a school committee member?
Thank you. I certainly agree that one of the major strengths is the diversity in the city. You know, for all the things that both the candidates have mentioned, and also just the diversity of the city itself and the history. And then you have the history, and then you have the energy of new folks coming in all the time. Salem seems to constantly being evolving, and I see that as a strength also. I think I would have to expound a little bit on the, beyond the diversity of our students and our staff and our parents. I would have to talk a little bit about, I see a major strength is the leadership in the school system at the time. I mean, you know, as I said, I have a long history of, in the Salem Public Schools. And I think that the most exciting that I have seen, it's the most exciting I've seen in a long, long time. You know, I think that from Dr. Zrake, you know, right on through everybody. I think everyone on the leadership team is working together. They have a specific goal, you know, the core values that they've brought out, the belonging, the equity, the opportunity. The plan meets the goals. Everything's organized. And I absolutely cannot imagine how appreciative people working in the system now must be, because I know how frustrating it was not to, at times, have that. And I also have to mention the support city side. Thank you.
Thank you.
In terms of strengths, I see the strengths in the public school similar to the strengths in Salem. I, even though we're a city of 45,000 people, I really feel like it's a tight-knit community. There are so many engaged people in our community that really care and that have big hearts, and they put their time into, into the work. Similar to what the other candidates have said, another strength I see of ours is in the leadership and in our committed educators. I see that as a huge strength. I've seen some of the educators work hard and sometimes up against the administration. And I think it's important that we highlight the voices of, not this current administration, but just in general, like that type of structure. There's a power imbalance. And I think it's always important to tap into the experts, which are the people doing the work. And the way that I plan on expanding that reach is going into communities and bringing some of my community organizing skills to the job.
Well, thank everyone for your first question being answered so well. You're doing great on time. Just a reminder for the folks on Zoom, they're really going to appreciate our being close to the microphones, so don't be afraid if you're loud in here, because it will help them. Okay, so the second question. Now, what do you view as the key challenges facing Salem Public Schools? And how would you address this challenge as a school committee member? I'm going to start now with A.J. and work our way this way and end with Henry.
I think one of our challenges is transportation, and that we really need to kind of figure that out better, so that we're better prepared at the beginning of school, so people aren't scrambling right before school starts to figure out how they're going to get their kids to school. I think we also need to look into the idea of neighborhood schools, because we are spread so far apart, and there are so many kids that I think sometimes the ability of having a school to walk to, you also have friends that you can hang out with during the day. And I know we worry about, like, a lot of things with, with our neighborhood schools, but I think it's a good thing to look at. And it also will help reduce some of the cost of busing, unless we can get some buses of our own and supply drivers in that way. Oh, that's it, sorry.
Yeah, thank you. Mary?
I think that one of the key challenges is the same as our strength, it's our diversity. We have a community of people who come from a background of neighborhood schools. We have a community of people who come from a background of school choice. We have people who come from, you know, my grandmother, you know, learned English right away. And then we have people who, like, we need to welcome the second language. We have people who are extremely fiscally conservative, and we have people who are fiscally liberal. And I think that the success is if you can, if you can balance all of that. And I think that's part of where the role of the school committee comes in, to balance all that diversity while not losing track of our own ideals. I think one of the challenges is the issue of neighborhood school versus the student assignment policy with school choice. Transportation does get into that. But it's a much more complicated answer, I think, than we went through the have our own buses, and that fiscally doesn't work. I mean, we, you know, we need to see where we're going to make decisions, every single decision we make, based on belonging, equity, and opportunity. And those three words ripple effect everything that we do. Every part of life in Salem is affected by, do we want our students to feel that those three words are a real part of their life and not just window dressing? And that's at times expensive, at times not. And I've just been told to stop.
Thank you.
I will be looking down periodically, because I need to take notes. That's kind of how I process. So I see some of the key challenges as breaking down institutional barriers in our education system. And I see my role as a school committee member to advocate on a local and state level to do all that we can to break down some of those barriers, whether that be for educators or our kids, our families. And I see funding being a barrier. And so we need to get creative about our funding sources and how we collaborate with our state leaders.
Thank you.
Yeah, so I think one of the, to tie in transportation, I do think transportation is, is an issue, especially with the scattered start times for the schools. But at the end of the day, we have that because of school choice. And I believe school choice is a good thing. It promotes equity. For a student like me, growing up with a high, as a high-need student, my neighborhood school might not have served me the best to my ability. So I would have needed to be bussed to another side of school that would help, help me better. The other thing we have to think about is, we are coming out of COVID. COVID has thrown a wrench into everything, our personal lives and our schools. Our, we have a huge childhood mental health epidemic happening right now, and I want to see expanded mental health care access to help take that on. Our teachers are burnt out. They're not feeling as valued as they should, and they're working long, extended hours. We need to make them feel valued. And it's a lot, but I believe that we can work on this together. And I believe the district and the leadership is doing a good job so far trying to tackle that on, but we need to keep it up.
Okay, thank you, everyone, for your answers to that question. This next question is a little bit longer, so I'll try to read it slowly. So there is a school planning process currently underway for a new Salem High School facility. In what way do you see the new building will impact both academically and community-based programming opportunities as well as enrollment? And as a school committee member, how would you seek to engage in a planning process? So I will start with Mary and work our way around this way again.
Say the first part again, please.
So there is a planning process currently underway for a new Salem High School facility. In what ways do you see the new building will impact both academic and community-based programming opportunities as well as enrollment?
Okay. I think Salem High unfortunately is, is in the position where some of the academic, a lot of the academic progress, not progress, I shouldn't say that, but opportunities to expand are held back by the facility. The technological possibilities of the building are not what they could be. The one half was redone in, I think, 2008 maybe or something. And then the other half, though, was always going to be done, and we never got back to it, because we never got funding. So there's even that imbalance in the building. But I have to say, I don't think buildings make academic programs or progress, per se. I think you have some of the best teaching, and people have alluded to the faculty. You have to have the faculty and the energy in the building, so we can't be saying a new high school will fix everything, because it's not going to. It's going to provide an avenue, but it's not going to fix academic, you know, progress. Yes, it will open some community possibilities, you know, more community theater, more whatever, to use the facilities when students aren't using them. But it has to, we have to keep the priority that it's a school first and then a community-based building. And I seriously think that, again, it still comes back to how we use it, how we use any building.
Okay, thank you.
Lady with the stop sign.
Can you repeat the second part?
Sure. So in what ways do you see the new building will impact both academic and community-based programming opportunities as well as enrollment?
Sure. I think this building project is very exciting. I think it opens up a lot of opportunities, or it could open up a lot of opportunities for us. It's obviously still in the planning stages. One way I think it could open up opportunities is expanding the CTE programs, Career Technical Education programs, and offering a redesign that allows middle, middle-school students potentially to be in the same building as high-school students. And overall, I envision this project as being one that allows for greater community building and providing, potentially providing a space for adult education. I'm just reading the question here. Yeah, so I, oh, also Salem High is currently, you know, some systems are failing. Half of Salem High is still, you know, it was built in the 70s. And so there's, there's a lot that we need in terms of upgrades. And I can see this project being so beneficial to the kids and the educators.
Thank you.
I think we have to realize that in the 1970s, that we built a high school that wasn't completely finished. We have a chance to really build a long-lasting high school that is safe for our kids and with, and modern in the, unfit to teach and educate in the modern day. Like the other candidate said, we have heating and H-fat cooling systems that are failing right now. We don't have adequate class sizes to accommodate smaller classes. And we need, we have a great chance now to build up our own great CTE program right here at Salem High School. We have Essex Tech, but that's capped for only a certain amount of students for the district. Why don't we relieve some of that burden and build, have a chance to really build an excellent CTE program? Because I, as someone who grew up on the, as a non-traditional student, I've seen firsthand how important CTE can be for students who might not want to go to high school right away, I mean, a college right away, or not to college at all. So teaching them the trades, they're going to get out of high school, and they're going to make good-paying jobs, and they're going to learn it right here at Salem High School.
Thank you.
I think this is a great opportunity for our, for our kids. I think this will assist a feeling of pride with our students. I think that we can create inclusive spaces, so everyone feels comfortable coming to school. I think, especially with, like, bathrooms for both kids that identify differently or kids with disabilities, I think it's a great opportunity to engage our community in helping our kids with a skill. The CTE program is a really great, I think it's going to lead us in a new direction. I think we can totally compete with Essex Tech. If we bring in, and also brings in community members that then help our kids, and our kids learn from them, and it builds upon, it builds upon, you know, like, almost like an internship-based learning. Because I don't think everyone's going to go to college, I want them to. But I think we also have to give our kids an opportunity But I think we also have to get, give our kids an opportunity to have a, sorry, skills. Sorry, I lost my train of thought. An opportunity to learn in the labor, like plumbing or electricity, stuff we need now. Anyway, sorry. Sorry, that's.
Thanks, everyone. It's a pretty pithy question, I admit that. But I appreciate you being able to have a synopsis that quickly for something like that. And I'm sure there's going to be future conversations about how that can work. Now, the next question is related to some funding. So as pandemic-related federal funds end, there's still a number of academic and mental health issues that need support within the Salem public schools. In addition to maintaining support for the new early childhood education program. In what ways can you see school committee working to address these issues through the budget and using creative ideas? So for that question, I will start with Veronica and work our way this way this time.
Thank you. Yeah, that's a real tricky one. Funding is, is always an issue. And at the same time, I think it's incredibly important that when we are tight on funds, that we're putting our money, using our money most effectively. And mental health is a priority because that impacts academics. Early learning is a priority because it is just, we know, the data is there. That supports pre-K and early learning, supporting adults later on in life and in our kids for learning. And so in terms of budget, our budget and having creative ideas for funding. I think we need to continue speaking out about it, advocating for these things. Continuing to call attention to the real need that we have in our community. To see a bit more of each other's humanity. And acknowledging that we're not just educating, we're not just filling our kids with information, but we're educating a whole person.
Thank you, Henry.
Yeah, this is, this is something that's absolutely critical and it's coming and it's happening right now. They are going, these funds are going to be exhausted after this fiscal year. So we need, it's, it's on the responsibility of the school committee to look within the current budget. And figuring out how we can maintain our cartwheel program that provides mental health resources for our kids. And our early childhood education programs, which are absolutely critical for future learning and early development. We hired over almost 60 staff with the, with the ESER funds. I don't want to see, those staff played a critical role during the pandemic. And we need to make sure that we can look again within the current budget coming up next year to see how we can keep these jobs and these programs. And also exhausting all external funding options as possible. Looking at federal and state grants and relying hopefully on chapter 70. I know we increased enrollment this past year, so hopefully we can get more chapter 70 funding. And just trying to do anything we can to keep these programs alive because this is what makes Salem schools great. And it's important for the long-term success of our students.
Thank you. AJ?
Yes, my hope is that we've already started thinking about that and the process is already, you know, in the forefront of our minds. I do believe that early childhood education is very important in our schools. But I also believe that, that our schools can't do everything for everyone. Not everything can be free. But I do think that we have a unique opportunity here to keep it free for our families. But that means us as a community also needs to help come on board with, you know, talking to our city councilors about funding our schools more. We need to fund our schools, plain and simple. And that way we can, since schools are the ones taking on all the pressure from families, like, you know, housing, clothing, feeding. Educating our children, but they don't get a lot of support from us as, as humans. And we need to be more aware of, look, we got to start funding our schools and we can get grants, we can get funding. And if anyone else has any ideas to help bring to the community, that, that is also something I think is important. But yeah, my, my hope is getting on, if I get on school committee is that there's a plan in place that we all just don't know about.
Thank you. Mary?
I think, first of all, regarding ESER, I certainly agree with what everybody's saying. I think that it's true, the ESER cliff, as they're referring to it, is, you know, going to be upon us before we realize it. But I think one thing that we need to do as a committee is to make sure that when we get to the edge of that cliff. We have nothing to bring over the cliff with us, but we've spent every single penny of the ESER money during this remainder of this year before we. I don't want to be in the position to give any, even a roll of pennies back, you know. I think we need to be relentless on the politicking of, of state funding. Still a little unclear to a lot of us on, on how, how sort of some of that funding played out the last couple of years and certainly working on that. And I think we got to make a real concerted effort as a, as a committee that people understand why we're asking for what we're asking when we go forward with the budget. That the public understands why, that the council understands why. I think we got to be really aggressive on looking for grant money. We are, but we need to continue to be even more aggressive. We need to internalize some of the professional development maybe. And we have some union negotiations coming up fairly soon that are going to be very difficult. That we want to, we need to walk that balance of, you're right, we need to acknowledge the teachers and their effort and their needs, which are tremendous. But we also have fiscal responsibility. So I think we have to put all of those things together and hang on like, like we possibly can at the cliff.
Yeah, thank, thank you for your thoughtful answers. As you know, this often takes quite a bit of deliberation. So being able to succinctly think about that for two minutes is a really wonderful start and an important thing for us all to be thinking about as a community. We're going to talk a little bit more now about what's happening on the ground in schools for our, our second set of questions. So as a school committee member, in what ways do you plan to show up in schools? And what would you attend the schools hoping to accomplish through your visits and to, and participating in events? I'm going to start with Mary for this question. So how would you plan to show up in schools and what would you hope to accomplish by doing so?
I, I try to make everything that I'm invited to, first of all. I think if, if a school committee is invited to attend something, if we possibly can get there, we should be there. I'm, I feel a little differently about uninvited visits and only, because I know that can be a high-stress thing for, for folks in schools. I'm not saying we shouldn't do that. I'm not, you know, at one point there was like, you cannot go, you know, I'm going back several years now under a couple of former superintendents. You know, you can't go unless you, you know, you announce you're coming, et cetera, et cetera. Well, I used to say to parents, I want you to drop in and announce, I want you to see what's really going on. I don't want to put on a dog and pony show. And I don't want people putting on one for me either. But I don't want to turn people into nervous wrecks either. I think there's a limited number of times we should just be plopping in. But I think anything that's going on that would be of interest, that they have me there and I be there, then I think that's an absolute positive. I also think we, we need to keep a very clear line of communication between folks in schools. That if they want to talk to us, to please feel free to talk. I mean, a couple of times over, before COVID, we would meet with school committee and, and principals. We'd have like roundtables and it was very productive, you know, conversation, person to person is huge. You know, I'm not on social media, I get that, that's my choice, you know. But I'll go anywhere you want, you know, and talk to you. And I think that's important.
Thank you.
Oh, I'm sorry. I wasn't sure which way we were going. Yeah, super important question. I think some of the ways that I plan on, on showing up in the schools is by learning all that I can. I actually have a tour this week to check out the CTE programs and learn a bit about that and about the space. And I think that's super important as a school committee member for us to get a grasp on all of the awesome things that are happening in the district. And then also the way that I would accomplish showing up in the schools. I think my role is to be a bridge and a resource for families. And so by, by looking for that information and by trying to understand the school, the district itself and all that we have to offer. I think I can try to bring that to families and, and open some doors for lines of communication.
Thank you.
Yeah, this is a fundamental job responsibility of a school committee member is to gauge feedback from all stakeholder groups in the school district. And that includes not just our educators, but our students as well. This is their education, this is their future and they deserve a voice. But the thing is, and I agree with the other candidates, it's, I don't, I don't want teachers to feel uncomfortable of me coming into the schools. I don't want them to feel judged, so I want to, I want to foster a culture where teachers and educators and staff and students feel comfortable talking to their school committee members. And express their issues or concerns and how we can help and not in a judgmental, or I'm here to just see what you're doing kind of mentality. You know, when I'm elected, I want to go on a district-wide tour and talk to as many people as possible. And, but that requires talking to, and that requires getting feedback as much as possible. So it's the, it's our job. And if we don't do that, we're not accurately making policy decisions for our students and our educators and our community.
Thank you.
I also agree with that, we're not the panel here. I would definitely come to anything I was invited to. And I think that being there as, the door is always open if you need to talk for, for educators, for students, for our leaders. Like we, we're a team, we should be doing this together. And the only way to make our schools great is we all work together.
Well, thank you, everyone. I'm going to go on to our next question. So Salem Public Schools has expanded the availability of high-quality, full-day, pre-kindergarten programming opportunities. To include all four-year-olds within the district. What are your thoughts about this program? And what would you do to improve the program, if anything? So for this question, I will start with Mary, but then I will go the other way and AJ will be second.
Okay, what, I'm just sort of laughing a little because I would probably ask every single other person in this room, what you do with a four-year-old before me. Because it's just not my total area of expertise. And one of the key things of being on a school committee is tapping into everyone's expertise. I have worked very hard because I, as a person dealing with older students. And even, and especially seeing kids like come out of the parent-child program versus not. You know, I saw the results of the early childhood work that goes on. I appreciate it. I appreciate that we have people doing it well. I appreciate my job is to make sure it gets funded. And I, I really, used to, as a middle school principal, I'd be so upset when somebody would get to me of coming out of a fifth grade with like, very, a very limited skill level and nothing in place to support like anything special. I mean, and it didn't happen much, but when it happened, I'd see, this started like years ago and like, I can't fix it right now, you know, right now. And so I'm probably happier than almost anybody that we have the four-year-olds in school. But I have to say, I'm also, I am relieved other people are working with them. I would not even begin to suggest something specific that those people do that they're not already doing. I, you know, I just, that's where, where I'm coming from. But I would fight like how to fund it next year, that's for sure.
Thank you. AJ?
Yeah, I, early childhood is so important. And I think it's really important that we have it in our schools. The, I, learning through play is really important to me. I really don't, can't see three and four-year-olds sitting at a table. I think we need to, you know, talk to other pre-K programs about what they're doing, more outside time. This is where they learn to cooperate, play, how to get along with a friend. And everything they learn in pre-K, they take right with them to kindergarten. And then if you foster it through kindergarten, it fosters through the rest of schools. So like, you know, if you have kids that don't get along, you work through with them and teach them how to be a friend. And then, and then they then take that with them to kindergarten and they help each other through. I think funding this is most important. And it's, it's a great opportunity for all of our kids.
Thank you. Henry?
I can't disagree. Pre, universal pre-K is absolutely critical for early childhood development. It's proven, it's been statistically proven that. And you'll see that, that kids that are, that all kids that go to universal pre-K have a better educational, will strengthen their educational foundation going forward. It's also a great opportunity for our very diverse families that live here in Salem, that a lot of parents are working multiple jobs. And they just don't have the, the capabilities of having childcare. So they rely on our Salem Public Schools to have universal pre-K to make sure that their child is safe and learning throughout the day. So as a school committee member, I'm going to make sure that it's funded to the best of its ability. And making sure that I'm communicating with them, with Dr. Reich and the staff at the pre-K. To make sure they have everything they need to continue this program for many, many years to come.
Thank you.
Can you repeat the question?
Sure. The Salem Public Schools have expanded the availability of high-quality, full-day, pre-kindergarten programming. To include all four-year-olds within the district. So what are your thoughts about this program and what, if anything, would you improve about the program?
Thank you. I am a big supporter of pre-K, as I had mentioned earlier. My daughter was actually in one of the first pre-K classrooms. And through that experience, I was able to see what the structure was like and how that impacted her. I think it's incredibly important to advocate on the state level when it comes to pre-K and universal pre-K. We need to really fight for that. We need to continue talking about it. And also tapping into our community partnerships that we, that we do have and we currently tap into. Finding creative ways to bring some funding to support the programs. So just looking at ways of using vouchers, like state, state vouchers, if that's possible. Or finding other ways that the state can support us in this. And with that, I will just say that it is incredibly important for our pre-K program to be developmentally appropriate. And which includes, you know, play-based pre-K.
All right, thank you, everyone. So just for a sense of timing for our audience as well, I have a total of 10 questions. We actually have one question that was combined, so we're actually on question number seven now. Many people are concerned about the level of educator turnover in our schools. What would you do as a school committee member to attract and retain teachers and principals? Let's start with AJ this time and work our way this way down the podium.
Yeah, that's a tough one. We, I think we need to support our teachers. We need to make sure that they have mentorship that they need, leadership that, that supports them too. That they're not just getting, you know, negative feedback all the time, that they're getting positive feedback, like what they're doing well. And I think we need to have some incentives and find a way to increase our teacher pay. And we have one of the lowest-paid school districts in the area and that's not okay. You know, teaching a really hard job and they're tired at the end of the day. And we know they're our kids, so we know why they're tired at the end of the day. But I think that incentives or ways for them to like, if, if people want to come into teaching and then they can teach and still go to school. And keep, keep furthering their education in supportive ways. Sorry, that's terrible.
Thank you.
Teachers are the backbone of our entire educational system. There's no question about it. If you want to keep teachers in Salem Public Schools, they need to be valued, they need to feel like they're being valued, and not just saying, oh, we appreciate our teachers on a teacher appreciation post. No, actually going in, gaining feedback, gauging feedback from teachers and not doing too much punitive, too much punitive punishment for how they teach their classroom. We need to pay our teachers fairly. It's a no-brainer. We are one of the lowest paid in the entire North Shore, and that's absolutely unacceptable. And we need to provide them career advancement opportunities. Once we get, we want to attract the best teachers in the country, in the state to come here. We want to keep them here by giving them career advancement opportunities. And we want to also hire, we want to hire teachers that reflect our school district. We need to hire more multilingual bilingual teachers to serve our, our student population. So we got to pay our teachers fairly, and we got to treat them with respect. If we start doing those and really mean it, we're going to see better teacher retention in Salem.
Thank you.
I think that people stay in their careers and in their jobs when the culture is right and when their supports, when the supports are there. And so as some of the other candidates had, had mentioned, we really need to be tapping into our educators for feedback and being willing to hear it, and then to do something about it. One thing that I think that we've looked at as a district, and that we've created some programs, is hiring educators from within and supporting our Salem High graduates in doing the work of education and learning what it means, means to be an educator. So many of our educators are incredibly passionate about the work, and education is really like the most important thing when it comes to a person's wellbeing.
Thank you.
I agree that, I think that the bottom line on this one is the culture in the school building, and in turn, then the culture in the system. I think that a lot of the turnover that we've had in recent years is, was, you know, based the same as everywhere else, the pandemic, the, you know, the stress of all of that. But I think beyond that, we've had some turnover that was based on the culture in, in some of the buildings. I think, I think teachers respond to the leadership on the leader, on a school level. I think that the school-based leadership teams are crucial to keeping good staff. I think having the, the resources that, that teachers need, by that I mean having librarians in the buildings, which I've been trying to get back for years. I think having a schedule that works. I think having prep time with somebody that teaches something similar to you, that you can actually do some planning, and we're getting better at that. But I think also providing professional development, that the teachers will be able to coach students to be, to be learners. Students should be working equally as hard or harder than the teachers. Teachers shouldn't be doing all the work. Students need to be the learner in this situation and doing the work to learn. Adequate counseling services for both students and teachers. I mean, we'll make, everybody's life benefits from that. I think the parent outreach programs will, will benefit and keep both families, students and teachers in the buildings. I, I think the leadership that Veronica just mentioned, having the path to leadership, I think we're doing a much better that job at, at that, at that than we have in the past in this system. But I don't think it's all money. It is money, certainly, but it's so much more than money that I can't talk about anymore.
Well, thank you for your answers. I appreciate that. We are doing well on our time as a result, so thank you, everyone. Now, moving into thinking about our teachers a little bit more. Henry, I'll start with you with this question and work our way this way, to Veronica next. What are your thoughts about having a teacher representative on the school committee? And should a student representative have a vote?
You have to think of our Salem Public Schools as a, as an ecosystem, right? We have our school committee members that serve as a legislative body. We have the superintendent that executes the school, school committee's vision. It's the teachers also, teachers, parents, and the students are also key stakeholders in this, in this whole system. We wouldn't be here without them. So I'm, I grew up, when I was in college, I was student government president, and I had a seat at the table at the president, the university's president's council, and I felt valued doing that. I felt like I had a voice. I absolutely believe that we should have a teacher rep on the, on the, on the school committee council, because if we don't have all voices being heard, we're not going to have a successful school district. And I also believe that the students should have a say too. This is their education, this is their future. And if they, if we are not fostering the, the ability for them to feel empowered, what are they going to do going forward? So they need to, both of those groups need to have a voice, and I would be a supporting, I would support that.
Thank you.
I would also support having a teacher representative for all of the reasons that were mentioned. The voice is incredibly important. And I think that if we had a teacher representative on the council, it would provide an avenue for more educators to, to feel comfortable speaking up. And as far as should the student representative have a vote? Yes, absolutely. I think that our youth are our future, and I, I don't see any reason why our student rep shouldn't have a vote and a voice for what's happening in the system that they exist in.
Thank you.
I think that we've made a lot of movement in this area without, regardless of the vote question. I mean, the, we have a teacher advisory council now that meets with the superintendent on a regular basis. We have a student advisory com, committee that, in the, well, we already said, we have had for, forever, we have to have a, a student rep. And that, and that evolved, that role has evolved in the past couple of years into somebody from the student advisory council, and they also meet with the superintendent on a regular basis. And I believe they're about to start meeting with us on a regular basis. So I think there's going to be some communication open there. I know the superintendent also meets with union representatives on a, on a basis, on a regular basis, or offices, maybe I should say. But I'm going to, I guess, be the dissenter here. I don't think that either, either a teacher, I don't think there should be a teacher rep on the committee, and I don't think either a student or a teacher should have a vote.
Thank you.
I think yes to both. I think a teacher voice up here is a great, is a great opportunity for all of us, and I think a student voice is important. I also think that they do have a vote. I would hope that with the student voice, though, I would like to see our high school representatives reach down to our middle school and elementary school to find out what, what their thoughts are and what they feel like they need. I think they get left out, and they also have a voice that needs to be heard. And I think I would support 100% a student on, and a teacher vote.
Okay, thanks. Thank you for answering that question. So next, we're going to talk a bit more about families and their role in the system that we're talking about, this ecosystem. So families in Salem currently have controlled school choice, which allows them to express their preferences across schools in the district rather than attend neighborhood schools. What are your thoughts about the benefits and drawbacks of changing the district's approach to neighborhood schools? So I will start with Veronica and work our way down.
Sure, thank you. I think some of the benefits to, I'm sorry, did you say benefits to changing?
So what are your thoughts about the benefits and drawbacks? So both pluses and minuses of changing the district's approach to neighborhood schools?
Thank you. I think some of the benefits to, to changing would show up in transportation costs, amongst other, other things, like having that traffic probably in the city. And also the idea of having kids from a community going to their community school. I think that can foster like community building and bring people closer. And also, at the same time, I can see how that would, we would end up with most of our marginalized populations going to one school, which is an inequity issue. And so I see benefits and drawbacks to both. And I know that as a body, that's something that we've talked about, and we'll continue the conversation going into it with as much research data as we can, and always leading with equity in mind.
Thank you. Mary, we'll have you next.
Yeah, I think that, and I've actually been thinking about this a lot because we are, the policy subcommittee is looking at that. You know, certainly come up with something to, to take another look at. But I think that, I agree that there's a, the positive would probably be that some families would feel a better sense of community if they were in a more local neighborhoods setting. I don't know actually that I would go on either side of the fence right now and saying we would save money on transportation. Probably in, to some degree, we would, but I'm not sure how much. And I'm not sure what the trade-off would that be, because I really see the minus of the imbalance. I mean, I worked in schools, there were elementary schools who had 80 and 90%. Back in those days, called free lunch to, to identify a socioeconomic level, and other schools had 11 and 12. That's why it went in. I, I will absolutely work that, that, that imbalance doesn't happen. Because the, the inequity of what students, through absolutely no fault of their own, can bring to the, to the school, the needs of parents, the needs of the teachers as a result of that, the inequity of resources that may be, we're trying, trying to be assigned, the culture of the schools takes on it, more of a need. I don't want schools that are need-based versus schools that are positive-based, anyway.
Thank you.
Yes. Yeah, I, I agree with all of you. I also think that even in school choice, we all choose our comfort, right? Everybody has a school that they like, everybody has, and, and we do it with our living too. Everybody has a neighborhood they like. I think what we need to focus on is making it equitable for all schools. So if you have a neighborhood school, the, the schools that, you keep an eye on what's happening. So like, you have a school that might be dipping down those, you add more supports to that school. But I think we can, we can stretch it out to fit everyone's needs, because we have great teachers. I don't think our, any school is bad, and I don't think any demographic of school would be bad either. I think we, in general, as a community, go where we're comfortable. I chose Horace Mann, it was the farthest school from where we lived. But I chose it because I liked the community, and I liked that it was based at a college. You know, other people like, because they have their neighborhood friends that go there or their family went there. I think that's, we have to be realistic about what we're looking for in our schools. If we just support all of them equally and then add more supports where they're needed, we can still build great schools, even if they weren't school choice.
Thank you.
I think we have to recognize our high-need students when we're thinking about controlled school choice. That's 72%, like I said. Every child learns differently, and if we, and if we go through that thought process, through that lens, you have to recognize that, you know, one child in one part of Salem, if they have a neighborhood school, and that child has an IEP, that school, for no fault of its own, might not adequately serve that child, and that child could be better served on a school on the other side of the city. That's going to change that child's project, trajectory, sorry, going forward and getting the, the help and support that they need so they don't fall through the cracks. If we get, if we go back to neighborhood schools, it's great that you're fostering a community, but you're also, you might not be best serving your students. And it's not equitable. And if you're doing it that way, it's not, I don't believe that's a, a good way to promote equity if we're going to neighborhood schools. So, and we also want to create diversity in our schools. And I think if we go to neighborhood schools, we're going to shy away from that a little bit, and that's one of our strengths, diversity. So I want to keep school choice.
Okay. Thank you. So we have a final question, and I will start with AJ, and we will work our way at the end to Mary before we have our closing statements. So now that the district has a new strategic plan, how will you continue to gather input from leaders, including our teachers, students, and parents, to align your work and vision for Salem Public Schools?
Well, I think that's all part of communication and keeping the door open. I would hope that, you know, I like our strategic plan. I think it's, it's a great start. I worry about implementation. I think we struggle with that sometimes. So I would just make sure that we are being thoughtful about our strategic plan and how we address, how we look back at it and how, how it guides us. And also always looking for input from students and teachers and administrators to see what's working for them.
Okay. Thank you. I'll go to Henry next.
You know, first part of the strategic plan is elevate learning. And one of the things that struck me is achieving a 71% positive feedback from our community on the, on how they feel comfortable sending their kids to Salem Public Schools. If we want to build on that, and I think it's a great goal, we need to be out there as active, proactive school committee members, going to as many events and engaging with many parents and community members as possible. That's what I'm doing right now, going door-to-door, talking to families and hearing current concerns and issues that are happening, that they feel that they are, they're feeling left out. And we want to make sure that we're fostering a culture where people are comfortable giving feedback, constructive feedback for our community. So we can elevate learning and get to that goal of 71% of, of a positive view of the schools. But we have to be active, proactive school committee members tackling it head-on. We cannot wait for families to come to us with issues. We need to go to them and say, what are your concerns? How can we make this better? That's our job as school committee members.
Thank you.
A lot went into the strategic plan. It took a very long time. I know that as a parent, I had, before being on the school committee, I was involved with that. And I think that the way that the strategic plan was done was very thorough and very mindful of educator voice, student voice, parent voice, and again, with looking through the lens of equity for all of our kids. Keeping communication open and having a culture of, a culture where our leadership is open to receiving feedback is incredibly important to me. And I think being able to just state where our weaknesses are and remaining, like having a sense of humility going into this job, I think is, is incredibly important. And so with that, yeah, that's all I have.
Thank you. Mary?
I, I think that it, again, just goes down to communication issues. And I think the system struggled for a while with that, and we've come way, way past where we were in fairly recent years. But I think getting the input, the two-way input, you get that, again, through the teacher advisory, you get that through union input, you get that through parents. But I think the parent piece has to be at home through the home, home visit program, at neighborhood meetings, a meeting in the Laurent Towers Community Room, a meeting in, in, you know, in the Point in the Community Room, those kinds of places rather than come to school. I don't, I don't really, I don't think we get, I know we get information from written surveys, but to me, that's such a small number of people that totally respond out of all the big, the big number. the big, the big number. I think that the, um, and I said, "I'm not on social media." I don't, it's not that I don't appreciate its impact. I know that the school has accounts on Facebook, on Instagram or whatever. I mean, the superintendent's there, he's meeting people on Zoom meetings live, and those things are important. Student advisory is important, and they are working in the middle school already. I know that. I'm not sure if they're in the elementary yet, but I know they want to be. But they've met with middle school students. I think open houses are good. I wish that we had them later in the year, not like an open house, meet the teacher and run around through a schedule in September, but come in and see what we're doing in the middle of the year, those kinds of things. Anyway.
Well, thank you so much, everyone. I'm sure that we could spend just more time hearing your thoughts, but I appreciate the time that you gave us this evening. At this moment, we're going to move into closing statements. So thank you for answering our questions, and you will have one minute. So if there's anything you didn't finish, um, you could try to finish it there, but we will only have one minute for closing. Going to start in ballot order with Mary, then we'll go to A.J., then Henry, then Veronica. So, Mary, you're first.
Thank, I can want to thank everyone for your, your patience during our answers. I guess I would just say that, you know, our, our students and families and staff today are continuing to face new and difficult challenges all the time, and the schools in turn are then asked to continually take on increasingly complicated roles and responsibilities. But I feel that the Salem Public Schools are facing that, that future, the future with a very thoughtful, organized perspective that all of our decisions, and I'm going back to this, all decisions we need to make have to be made based on the core values of belonging, equity, and opportunity. And those mean the tough decisions of assignment to schools, of teacher assignment, of transportation. When you get to those core issues of what are we going to do about this, it has to come back to me based on those three things. I have to say, it's been a long time since I have felt as hopeful as I do about our school's future right now. I think true commitment to these, to these core values has already begun to bring about some really honest, true change, where it's been long-needed for a long time in some situations. I hope to continue that for the next four years. Thank you.
I want to thank the League of Women Voters and Salem Education Foundation for inviting me here tonight, and I want to thank everyone here at the table. You all have been really wonderful supports to me. This is not my strong suit in front of all of you. But I strongly believe in our schools and our teachers and our administration, and I think the only way forward is with, with an open mind and a kind heart. So let's support our kids.
Thank you.
Again, I also want to echo, thank you, everyone, for coming out, and especially my fellow candidates. You have made this first-time candidate very, very happy and feeling very supported, and I thank you, all three of you, very much for being so wonderful. This is a fantastic forum, and I am happy to see it happening again. As a candidate for Salem School Committee, I think the biggest things I bring to the table are my lived experience as a high-need student, my work experience in the nonprofit sector, and honestly, my energy. I would be thrilled to have the opportunity to make our schools a place where every student is excited to learn and our teachers are excited to teach, and I look forward to working with all of our teachers, administrators, and parents and students of every background to get to that vision if I'm elected, and thank you very much.
Thank you.
I've been on the school committee for several months now, and I do just want to add in my closing statement how blown away I've been by the empathy and compassion that my fellow school committee members current bring to the table. And all of the candidates here are great candidates. We are all bringing different perspectives. But I, I do just want to highlight that I think it's incredibly important to bring the voice of the people, and that means all people. And I hope that when I am in this seat and if I'm elected and I, and I've earned my votes, that I'll be able to bring the voice of the community with me.
Well, thank you so much, everyone. First, I want to thank you, candidates, for running for school committee and for putting forward your ideas and perspectives with us and sharing it with our audience virtually as well. Many thanks to the Salem Education Foundation, also League of Women Voters for such excellent planning and execution of this event and hosting. We also want to thank Salem Public Schools for allowing us to use this space, also being, you know, our muse tonight and being a space where we're excited about seeing some wonderful opportunities expand themselves. Our interpreters, we want to thank them as well for participating this evening. Katie and Alexandra, we really appreciate you. I know we couldn't see you in the space, but it's really important for us to make sure we're linguistically inclusive as well for our families. Also thanking SATV for broadcasting and videotaping this forum. So the recording will be available on the channel and also on the YouTube channel. So all 11 city council and three school committee seats are on the ballot this November, so please note these deadlines. I'll say them slowly. So the last day to register to vote is this Friday, October 27th, between 8:00 a.m. and 5:00 p.m. Please be sure to check your registration status if you're not sure on the Secretary of the Commonwealth's website. The last day to submit a vote by mail is Tuesday, October 31st, by 5:00 p.m. If you are going to receive your ballot by mail and plan to use it that way, please return it as soon as possible. The last day to apply for that in-person absentee ballot is Monday, November 6th, by noon. As you all may recall, election day is Tuesday, November 7th, with polls open between 7:00 a.m. and 8:00 p.m. So thank you for your civic engagement and your involvement. Please encourage your neighbors to vote as well. And I want to stop here to allow you to hold your applause that you've been keeping in all evening, to please share that with our candidates. So thank you, everyone.
And thank you as well.
Yes, thank you.
Thank you for having me.